I'm calling the Wayne County Board of Commissioners to order. The invocation today is by Commissioner Wayne Acock as well as the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Acock.
By our heads, the Hail and the Father would come to you today with heavy hearts. We just ask that you be with the family of Commissioner, Chairman Commissioner Ray Mayo, that unexpectedly passed away. Just be with his family, be with this county because Commissioner Mayo was a part of this county. He helped make decisions for the well-being of Wayne County for many years. And we just ask that you again be with Wayne County and Mr. Mayo's family. We ask that you be with our men and women in uniform, the ones that are deployed, keep them safe. We ask that you be with our first responders, our EMS, our fire, our law enforcement, and all first responders, keep them safe so they can return to their families. We just ask that you have mercy on this great nation of ours. Some of the things that are going on, we do not understand, but we know you do. We ask that you be with the leaders of our state, that they made the right decisions, and the leaders of our nation, regardless of what their opinions are, we ask that you be with them so that the right decisions can be made. We ask that you be with the president and his family that's going through the virus, and anyone else that's in our government, in the state, county, local, that's dealing with this virus. It's a time for us to come together as one nation. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've seen the minutes of our September 15 meeting to have a motion to approve.
Ms. Vice Chair, could we make sure we acknowledge Bill?
Yes, I'm sorry. We do have Commissioner Bill Pate online today. Bill, welcome.
I'm out here. Can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear us?
Yes, okay.
Great, great. Okay. If I could have a motion to approve the minutes, so September 15th. Okay, we got a motion. Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor signify by raising your hand or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we've got discussion of an adjustment of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. We do have a few adjustments today. Number one, we would like to remove the Public Affairs video. We will do that at a separate time. And we would also like to remove the 911 EOC tour. And we'll also do that and reschedule that for a separate time as well. What we would like to add is a resolution honoring Chairman Mayo, and we would put that under Special Presentations at number one, and move the Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation to number two. And we would also like to add, under the Consent Agenda, the Work Order Authorization for the Jetport to look at Runway Strength. I'm going to add that to Consent Agenda as number nine.
Okay. Is there any other adjustments to the agenda? Being none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand or signify by saying aye. Okay, Special Presentations. I've asked Commissioner Acock to read this proclamation. Commissioner Acock, I think, and Mr. Mayo were classmates together and graduated together, is that correct? So I appreciate your reading that for us.
Thank you. Resolution 2020-32, resolution honoring the life of Chairman E. Ray Mayo. Whereas Udis Ray Mayo was born in the Hunter Community of Wayne County, North Carolina. And whereas Ray Mayo owned and operated North Carolina Manufacturing Incorporated and was co-owner of M&amp;M Industrial Supply. And whereas Ray Mayo previously worked as a machine shop instructor at Newport News Shipbuilders Apprentice School, and as a manufacturing engineer at Acme United Corporation in Fremont. And whereas Ray Mayo served District One of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners since 2011, having been elected as vice chairman in 2012 and chairman in 2019. And whereas Ray Mayo served on numerous boards, councils, and committees, including as chairman of the Wayne County Board of Social Service, of which he took great pride in serving. And whereas Ray Mayo leaves a cherished in his memories his wife Janice, his son Steve, and wife Tracy, his daughter Karen, and husband David, his sister Janice Lane, and the apple of his eye, his granddaughter Scotland Ray, plus many more beloved family and friends. And whereas Ray Mayo will be especially remembered for his faith in God, something that he shared often. Ray was a member of First Baptist Church, serving as a member of the Deacon Board and the Finance Committee, and as well as an usher. And whereas Chairman E. Ray Mayo will be missed for his humble leadership, his kindness to all, and his bottom-line explanations. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor the life of their fellow Commissioner, Chairman E. Ray Mayo, and extends their deepest sympathy and condolences to his family and friends. Adopted April 6, October 2020. Joe Doherty, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
And I take that as in a form of a motion.
Form of a motion, yes, sir.
Okay. A great resolution honoring a great man. We got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand and an aye from our WebEx member. Do I hear a aye? Bill, are you still there?
He's muted.
We must have lost Bill. But that motion has been passed unanimously. And next you have another presentation. Commissioner Acock.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. It gives me great honor in reading this one also. As many know, October is designated as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I don't know whether I'm blessed or fortunate, but I am one of the few male breast cancer survivors. And so this resolution means a lot to me. And I would like to also, you know, before I read it, only 1% of breast cancer is in males. All the ladies that are listening, you fall into 99% category. Make sure that you regularly visit your doctor and make sure that everything is okay. Because the chances of y'all getting breast cancer is 99% more than a male. So please take care of your health. Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Whereas breast cancer touches every corner of the United States, and hundreds of thousands of Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and tens of thousands will die from it. And whereas about 1 in 8 women born today in the United States will get breast cancer at some point in their lifetime, and approximately 2,000 men are diagnosed with breast cancer each year. And whereas we show our support for every individual and every family struggling breast cancer, we pause to remember those we have lost. Whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer, for getting mammograms, encouraging our community, organizations, churches, families, individuals to get involved. And whereas we salute the women and men who dedicate themselves to prevention, detection, and treatment as we observe Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Wayne County, and encourage all citizens to join in activities that will increase awareness of what we can do to prevent breast cancer. Adopted this date, 6th of October 2020. Vice Chairman Joe Doherty.
Okay. That's in form of a motion, sir.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand or signify by saying aye. Is Bill back?
He's, he, I was just getting ready to say, give this to the unmute. Because he has to keep his computer on mute.
Oh.
So that we don't get the back feed here, so.
Oh, okay.
So, Mr. Pate, do you have anything to say?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, Bill.
This thing is backwards today for some reason.
All right, we had a motion on the floor.
Aye is my vote.
All right, we have a motion in regards to approving the proclamation on breast cancer. Did you vote in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let me back up if I could, and that would be the motion on approving the proclamation of the life of Ray Mayo, Chairman Ray Mayo. Did you want to vote on that?
I said yes.
Okay, great. Okay, we're up to, up to date now. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Okay, with that said, we are now moving over to the presentation. And Mr. County Manager, if you could tell us what this is.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We do have on the line Ms. Navasheena Burns of the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. She wanted to give us an update on the HUD, CDBG, DR Home Recovery Program that the state is implementing. So she is on WebEx right now, and, but we do have her presentation here, and we would like to, thank you for being online. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. However, while I am on here, I'm also, thank you, Mr. County Manager, I'm also here with our Chief External Affairs Director for the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Office of Recovery and Resilience. And her name is Haley Pfeiffer Haynes, and she will actually be giving the presentation. So Haley Haynes, I think she's on the line now, and she will be going along. Right now, we cannot see the presentation on our end, so I think Haley has it, might have it open. And the way we'll work through this, hopefully, is just to say next slide or advanced slide, but I'm going to turn it over to Haley now.
Good morning. As Navasheena said, my name is Haley Pfeiffer Haynes. Can you all see the presentation or the slides that we sent?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to open up mine then at the same time and just, I'll tell you all when I'm going to the next slide so they can advance you, because I can't see what you, what you have. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing Navasheena and I to join you in your meeting this morning. I want to extend our deepest condolences on the passing Chairman Mayo. I know that that was a surprise, and it's always hard when a member and a colleague, when you lose someone unexpectedly, so our deepest condolences on that. What I'm here to do today is to tell you more about the work of our office, which is the Office of Recovery and Resiliency. We are a division within the Department of Public Safety. And if we go to the second slide, this is just a bit of an overview of what I'm going to cover today. We'll give you a brief overview of INCOR, which is the shorthand for the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency. That's kind of a mouthful to say, so we shortened it a little bit. I'm going to talk to you some about the Homeowner Recovery Program, the Strategic Buyout Program, as well as some coming soon programs that we have. And then I'll be available for any questions that you have. Next slide. So the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency was created in the wake of Hurricane Florence, when Governor Cooper wanted to lead the state in efforts to rebuild smarter and stronger. As you know, we've had quite a few hurricanes, and we, because of the severity of the hurricanes, the state began getting money from HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, in the form of community development block grants for disaster recovery and for mitigation. This stream of funding is somewhat different from regular community development block grants, and it's got a lot of extra administrative burdens really that come along with it. And so having an office established that could deal with this stream of funding efficiently across the state is the goal of our office. We also manage a Grants and Loans program, which is funded with state dollars, and that is for local and tribal governments, for both grants and loans, in order for them to recover from hurricanes. The loan part of it is to allow localities to have some fundability when they've got reimbursement programs, you know, as FEMA is a reimbursement program, sometimes localities have a hard time coming up with the money upfront. And so these no-interest loans allow for the locality to have some cash flow in order to get a program going, and then request the reimbursement from FEMA, and that is what we're paid back with. And we think that's a really good use of state funds to allow more localities to take advantage of federal funds. We also have a resiliency mission, as our name implies, and we have, in North Carolina, one of the first state resiliency officers. Her name is Dr. Jessica Whitehead, and she's got two other members of her team. And part of what the resiliency team does is create programs and opportunities for local communities to learn more about how to recover resilient, resiliently from hurricanes and other natural disasters, as well as plan for the future. So as they are making decisions about how their community is going to be developed, they can do that in a resilient way. We published earlier this year the Natural Hazards Resilience Quick Start Guide for North Carolina Communities. And last Thursday, there was a statewide program called North Carolina, now I'm blanking. It's a Resilient Communities Program that was launched last Thursday. And so you'll be hearing more about that as those programs roll out. Next slide. So I'm going to turn to the Homeowner Recovery Program. The Homeowner Recovery Program provides assistance to repair, reconstruct, or elevate homes that were damaged by Hurricane Florence, or Matthew, or both. So we help people recover from those storms. And if you go to the next slide, we can talk about eligibility. So in order to be eligible, a homeowner must own a home that was damaged by Hurricane Florence, Hurricane Matthew, or both. They have to have occupied their home as their primary residence at the time that the storm occurred, and continue to own it through project completion. They need to be lawfully present in the United States, have legal authority to enter into a funding award, and be willing to give our staff, inspectors, and contractors access to the damaged property. Next slide. We are focused on serving low to moderate income folks, and as a result, there is an income limit in terms of eligibility. So we serve households with incomes less than 150% of the area median income, and that's determined by county. Homeowners can be ineligible if their household income is greater than 150% of the area median income. However, there's a lot of ins and outs of what's considered income and not, and so we still are encouraging people to go ahead and apply if they're not sure if they're above or below that mark. We still want them to apply so we can do that calculation, and we want to serve them if they qualify. And we had a previous application period open to help homeowners. And for Hurricane Matthew, people who have applied under that, during that time period don't need to reapply. We reopened our application period once we got the Florence funding earlier this year. So folks who previously haven't yet been assisted don't have to reapply. We've got their information. Sometimes we get asked if homeowners can apply for the program if they've received funding from a different grant room, and the answer is yes, they can. So just because someone has received some FEMA help, that does not disqualify them. If they still have unmet need, they can, they can still be served by our program. What they have to do is just tell us about what that assistance was, and sometimes that assistance will reduce how much we can help them, but sometimes it doesn't, it doesn't reduce that. But it's certainly not a bar, and we want as many people who have unmet needs to apply for our program. So HUD sets up this program in a way that the money is focused on the most impacted and distressed counties. And you can see on the next slide that there is a map that shows the most impacted and distressed counties for both Hurricane Florence, Matthew, and then those who were most impacted by both hurricanes. And of course, Wayne County is one of those, unfortunately, that has been severely affected by both Hurricanes Florence and Matthew. Go to the next slide, please. So because Wayne County has been so severely affected, you know, the funding is available for your residents. Right now, we've had 28 Wayne County residents who've applied since we opened Phase Two of the Homeowner Recovery Program on June 15. I want to give you a few other stats and statistics that are not reflected on this slide. There are 20 homes currently under construction. 34 homes have been rehabilitated or repaired, and 30 new homes have been completed. 17 of those are mobile home units, and 13 of them are new construction. And I don't know if I told you to go to the next slide, but that's, if you're looking at the slide that's got a map on it, but with white and yellow or orange, that's the slide I'm on, the one after the colorful map.
Yep, we're there.
Okay, good. If you go to the next slide, one of the things that, since the opening of, of the Homeowner Recovery Program occurred after COVID hit us, we had planned to have 18 application centers open across eastern North Carolina, with one in Goldsboro. But because of COVID, we have only recently, as in yesterday, opened these centers up on a limited basis. And this is to allow folks to come for curbside service. They will call our 1-833-ASK-RBNC number to make an appointment, and then they can come by at that appointment time, stay in their car with their mask on. Someone from that, that works in our center, staff member will come out to their car with a mask on, will retrieve documents from them, or a paper application if they have that, take those documents inside, scan them, and then return them to folks in their car. They don't ever have to get out of their car. A lot of folks who have applied to our program since opening in June have been reluctant to send in scanned images of some of these documents, because they do have a lot of personal identifying information on them, or maybe they don't have the means for that. And so we are glad that we are able to open up these centers on this limited basis so that we can facilitate getting the documentation in, so we can move people forward in their application. We've got to have a lot of, you know, various documents that go along with applying for getting your home repaired or replaced. So that is available now, and you can see where that, that application center is. If you go to the next line, slide. So folks can make an appointment, come by and pick up a paper application, but we do have an online application. That wasn't something that we had originally planned, but when COVID started evolving, we realized we really had to have an online application so that people could get started in applying for assistance in the safety of their home during this pandemic. So we will also provide them paper applications, and, and also people can get some help with the application over the phone by calling 833-ASK-RBNC. As the pandemic evolves, and we hope lessens, we hope that we'll be able to open up our centers for actual appointments with folks. You know, we are, we are fitting out our centers to be able to do that. It may be on a reduced capacity and with Plexiglas and all that. We're just not quite there yet, but that is something we really do want to do, because we know that it really helps folks to come in and talk to someone face-to-face about their application. You go to the next slide. So now I want to talk about our Strategic Buyout Program. And in fact, we do have three buyout locations in Wayne County. So what the Strategic Buyout Program does is it provides eligible property owners located in areas that are prone to repeated flooding, the opportunity to relocate to safer, a safer area. And if you can see on this slide, it's a, it's a bit of a, it goes in a bit to show you where these locations are. One is in Seven Springs, one in West Goldsboro, and one in South Goldsboro. And right now, we actually have three applications for strategic buyout from your residents in Wayne County. You go to the next slide. So, and how it works, the Strategic Buyout Program works with, with you all, local governments, to identify areas with the greatest risk of damage from future hurricanes and floods. And then for residents, their buyout award is based, well, right now, it's based on the pre-storm fair market value of an applicant's property minus any duplication of benefits. However, as we've started processing these applications using these guidelines, we're finding that the awards that folks are getting may not be as generous as we would like for them to be able to relocate. And so we are adjusting some of our policies in this area so that we can provide richer incentives to folks to be able to, to buy them out, but also to allow them to go to a safer place and give them enough funds to start over in someplace where they will not be repeatedly flooded out. If you go to the next slide. So coming soon, we do have a small rental repair program, and that's for folks who own year-round rental property that was damaged by Hurricanes Matthew or Florence. And it will provide financial assistance from this program to get some full-time rental structures back into rental shape. And you can see that some of those qualifications, you have to have remaining repairs on the property up to $5,000 or more. And it's in order to make the property ready for affordable rents. So there are some restrictions there around keeping those rents affordable for a period of time after you've gotten benefit of the program. If you go to the next slide. So at INCOR, we are focused primarily on the recovery from hurricanes and getting people to build smarter and stronger. I do want to talk to you just for a moment about another program that we are standing up, and that has to do with rent and utility assistance. This is This is something that Governor Cooper announced back in August, and we expect for this program called the HOPE Program, which is housing opportunities and prevention of evictions program, that to open in the very near future. We are sending that funding, which is federal funding, to local subrecipients. In Wayne County, that's going to be the Greenlamp nonprofit, who will be accepting applications and providing people assistance for back rent and unpaid utilities. So that is going to be coming very soon, and you'll be hearing more about that in the very near future. I'm available to answer any questions that you have, either about the HOPE Program or any of our hurricane recovery programs, and I want to thank you again for your time.
Well, thank you. Does any commissioners have any questions that they might like to pose?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good morning.
Commissioner Kamarty.
Yes.
Good morning to both of you. I would first like to thank you and of course thank the governor and anyone in the chain who has anything to do with making this kind of fun impossible. Just as an editorial, the rental real estate market during the times of hurricanes and so forth does not sometimes get the same attention as some other small businesses and larger businesses also, and so thank you very much. I want to go specifically to page 30, well, my book is 36, but it's the coming soon small rental repair program.
Okay.
On the surface, it sounds very good, but the last bullet says to qualify, you must have remaining repairs needed on the property estimated $5,000 or more to make the property ready for renters and protect against future storms. Some of my colleagues who are property owners slash landlords preparing properties for renters have already had to bear the expense of getting these properties repaired because sadly, the state of North Carolina have allowed insurance companies to be able to skirt or to avoid paying claims, and it also, it has to do with the technicality of the cost of the repair versus the value of the property. And that's what, Lynn, for another longer discussion, and I don't want to get into that. But my concern is that it looks like this last bullet on that particular page, coming soon, small rental repair program, it looks like, and I apologize if I'm misreading it, but it looks like that's another one of those escape routes that would disqualify some folk for getting assistance who have already proactively put the property back in place to rent. I hope I'm not misstating that because we've had to outlay many dollars to make the property ready for rental, and Matthew came through in 2015. Well, it's been four or five years, and then we also had problems with Florence, but Matthew probably was the biggest culprit for this. So I just wanted to say that to you so that you all can think how property owners would be best served based upon interpreting these guidelines, and I'll stop there.
Thank you, Commissioner Kamarty, and we will definitely take back to our policy team because I do understand what you were saying. I think, if I could, that the reason why the policy is stated this way is because it's aimed at making more affordable rental units available, increasing that stock. But I also understand that there are a lot of people who have already outlaid some funds and, you know, have really struggled to get those properties back online. So I will definitely take this back to the policy team for them to consider how we can still serve those who've had to help themselves and might still have some unmet need.
And I'll close with this, ma'am. Thank you very much, and I see where your telephone numbers and all those things are in place, and I will, once again, thank you for having this kind of program, and I will certainly be in close contact with you all soon. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Doesn't appear to be any other questions, so we want to thank you so much for the presentation, and we've got your contact information. We can get in touch, we'll pass that along within the community.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, next on the agenda is the Appointment Committee.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair. We do have some appointments for today. The Appointment Committee made the recommendations at the last meeting, and I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to please help me with somebody named on this one.
All right. To begin with, these are the recommendations that were made by the Appointment Committee on September 15th that will be voted on today. To begin with, we have the appointments. These are all to the Latino Council. I'm just simply going to read the names. Kim Larson, Anna Snyder, Aaron Stryker, Joel Gilli, Adalia Arlano, Ally Battaglia, Lee Strickland, and Louis Cariscola. Again, these are all appointments to the Wayne County Latino Council.
That's in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've got a motion on the appointment as the names that have been read. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand or eye. Okay, next.
Next, we have reappointments to the Wayne County Latino Council. That is for Maria Marquin and Michelle Estrada.
Okay.
That's in form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion on the reappointments. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand or eye.
And finally, these are the last recommendations from September 15th. Fran Casey and Geraldine Sherard as reappointments to the Wayne County Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee.
That's in form of a motion, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, we've got a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand or eye. Okay.
Thank you. I think I can handle this one.
Yes, sir.
This is recommendations today for us to vote on at our next meeting. We'd like to recommend an appointment of Jessica Taylor to the Child Facility Prevention Team, and that will be voted on at our next meeting.
Okay.
Also, we'd like to, the Appointment Committee would like to recommend the appointment of Charles Brown to the Wayne County Public Library Board of Advisors, and that will be voted on at the next meeting.
Okay.
The Appointment Committee would like to recommend the appointment of DeMarcus Reed to the Goldsboro Planning Commission, and that will be voted on at our next meeting. Then that is to fill the vacancy of a member that, did he just, did he retire or pass away?
All I know is Mr. Corbett was no longer attending.
Okay, all right. That will be on our next meeting, Mr. Vice Chairman.
And that was DeMarcus Reed?
DeMarcus Reed.
R-E-I-D. It was not on your paperwork. This was brought to my attention by Commissioner Hardison yesterday that this was someone that he was recommending to the Appointment Committee, and the person had sent in their application, so that was discussed this morning. That's why it was not in your packet of information.
And this position has been vacant for a right good while?
It has been, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, anything further?
That's it.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the boards are aware, we did go over our consent agenda in our pre-agenda, and we did add the number nine, the Work Authorization 14, for the Wayne Executive Jip Board to look at the runway strength.
And the appropriate budget amendment.
And the appropriate budget amendment, yes, sir. We have to make Allison happy, yes, sir.
That's right.
But with that added, we'd like to present the consent agenda for your approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I moved it. I moved that this consent agenda be approved in its entirety.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand or eye. Okay, that's passed. And on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Number one is discussion and approval of the Wayne County Public Records Policy. This is in your agenda packet. This has been recommended and reviewed by our county attorney, and we present this for your consideration.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I beg your pardon?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand or eye. Okay, when that passes, next item?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Next is a motion to approve purchase of MSV Series 500 rapid testing van for the Health Department as recommended by the purchasing manager. If you can see in our agenda packet, the space that we are asking for, as we've discussed before with CARES funding, half of this will come from the existing CARES dollars that we have already received. The other half, Health Director Brenda Weiss has found another funding source, so it was a shared cost of, excuse me, the entire amount is $144,000. So half of it will come from existing CARES, and half of it will come from a new pot of CARES dollars.
Now, let's give her a little bit more credit than that.
She found additional grants, and that was kind of the deal that the board made with Brenda, said if you can find additional funding for the van, and again, it will not only be just for COVID testing. Hopefully, once we get a vaccine, we'll be able to use vaccines out of this, but also once hopefully COVID is over, we'll be able to use it for flu vaccines as well.
Great, great. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve.
With the appropriate budget amendment.
With the appropriate budget amendment. Any discussion on the motion? Being none, all, go ahead.
I would like to just ask this question, and we don't have the answer right on this moment, but this goes to our director. How many tests, or what percent of the population has been tested in Wayne County? And that's a question that I would like to, I know it has to be researched.
Right, we updated on our dashboard. It is on the Wayne County dashboard. We do that daily as far as the number of tests that have been given throughout the county. I think there's still testing that is continuing to go on. The positive thing about testing right now is our level of positivity is going down per test. So I think we're below 8% at this point, which is either right at or even below the state average at this point.
Once again, and I know this statement that I'm getting ready to make has implications for the HIPAA laws, and I realize that Wayne County cannot change those, but the interpretation of them may be so. As these tests are done and they deem positive, I just think it's fair to the property owners, not just the property occupant, but the property owner be notified that they own a house that has a positive implication, not the name of anyone, but the fact that that resident has a positive implication. There is no way that a property owner needing to come in contact with the residence and all the property has any protection against blindly coming in contact with COVID-19. And I just want the interpretation to be considered that the property owner be made aware that the property has a problem. And I say that out loud to the public who may be listening, other people who own property or someone else living in it. I just want to reach out to them to see what they think.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, being done. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand or eye. Okay, we now move into our public comment portion. Is there anyone signed up for public comments?
No, sir.
No one speaking for our public comments, so we close the public comments section. County managers report.
Just a couple of things. And number one, I want to thank Carol for work she did on the resolution for Chairman Mayo as quickly as that was done, and we appreciate that. And want to thank the staff at the Maxwell Center, again, to remind everybody that there's a public visitation today at the Maxwell Center from 4:00 to 6:00, and there will be a service held at the Maxwell Center at 6:30. So again, this has been a very tough week for the board. It's been a very tough week for our staff. One of the things I do want to publicly thank is our EMS department. They did just an outstanding and heroic job in their work this week, and I just want to publicly thank them and Dave Cutterback, and again, for everybody that helped out during this time of need. But it's been a tough week for us. Hopefully, it'll get better, but it's been a tough week for us, and we just want to let people know that we appreciate the work of the chairman and his families and our thoughts and prayers, and very appreciative and thankful for the job he did for Wayne And that's all I have.
Okay. All right, Board of Commissioners, committee reports. Commissioner Acoch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Like Mr. Honeycutt just stated, you know, it's been a tough, tough last few days. I did attend the State of the Military at the Maxwell Center, and that went well, just getting an update on the status at the base and the cooperation with the county and the city and that. Also, I was scheduled to go to Langley Air Force Base this past weekend with the MAC, and with the untimely passing of Commissioner Mayo, I didn't feel comfortable going, so I would have had a report on that. Maybe we can get one from the MAC Committee later on, but I just didn't feel comfortable leaving Wayne County with what was going on. And again, like Mr. Honeycutt said, I just want to thank all of our EMS and first responders because we had both, some other than EMS, I'll only call it Mr. Mayo's, and Mr. Mayo's family expressed to me how grateful they were on the performance of our, as we called it, the A-Team. We just had the right team in the right place at the right time. They did everything they could. The family was well pleased with the effort. The family was well pleased with the effort that they put in to to help Mr. Mayo. But it, you know, it just didn't work out. But again, I, you know, I would call some names, but I would leave someone out. But we, I just want to thank everybody that was involved in that. And that's all I have, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Warham.
Yeah, just a few things. My condolences to the Chairman Mayo's family. It's definitely going to be a loss for Wayne County and also the county commissioners. The second thing is to remind the public that we are still having COVID testing throughout the county. So I just like to encourage everyone to do so. And we're still have Operation Chromebook in effect for our kids. There's a great need for the hotspot devices so our kids can perform their work while at home. That's a great need. So we're still calling for the, for the citizens of Wayne County and the businesses to support us in the Operation Chromebook. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cromartie?
Okay, I was, thank you. Out of sight, out of mind. Going to leave him best for last.
There you go.
I hope he's listening. First, I would like to offer my condolences to the family of our beloved Mr. Mayo. I had many occasions to talk with him on telephone. We probably talked on the telephone about a variety of things. But one of the most appreciated things about Mr. Mayo firstly is that his Christianity. He and I shared that conversation maybe because of our age, maybe because of our families, whatever. You know, you have a certain connection with someone. And I saw him as a great family man, a great father, grandfather. And when you get into that range, you have a commonality. Other thing was that his loyalty and his advocacy for Department of Social Service. There's about 225 employees over there. And so you can imagine how many people we actually serving. When you have 225 employees in an apartment, if they didn't, if it was just one-on-one, that's a good number, 225, would be a good number of people to serve. But that 225 employees serve thousands, I imagine, of thousands of employees. And Mr. Mayo was a strong advocate for that department and for the leadership of that department. And that department will need another strong advocate for that department. My tenure will end on the board, I don't know what day, December or something. And Mr. Mayo and I served on that, on that department's advisory group for the commissioners together and enjoyed that. I would also like to thank Allison and the chair and our county manager for taking another look and making another contact with the funding sources for CARES. When I first asked about it, understanding the Mount Olive, they missed the cutoff. It looked like it wasn't going to happen for them. But they, like it was stated earlier, they had a transition in leadership. And I'm sure that they will be getting all the necessary paperwork if it doesn't already been forwarded to you. And I'll double check with them to make sure that's happened. Last thing I would like to say is I appreciate that report, that program that we were just presenting about rebuilding. When you look at those pictures in there, it looks like anyplace in Mount Olive after a strong rain. And so Mount Olive is one of those flood areas. I want to make a comment about a gentleman. I don't have my notes in front of me, but I hope he will monitor this. There was a gentleman called me that had some property off of Highway 70 that floods real bad. And they sent me, I think, sent me some pictures. And it looks like this, looks like they may have taken the pictures that this young man sent me. And I just want to let him know that while, yes, I'll be advocating for what's flooding in Mount Olive, but I'll still continue to advocate for all flooded areas in Wayne County. It's a desperate situation when you step out in your yard and about how to swim to get to the road or to your car. And so we all understand that. And I want to just, once again, thank the folk who will be managing this. And of course, I know that somewhere up the chain of command, there's some, probably some public officials in Raleigh and Washington that has a direct input on this. And without knowing their names, I want to just publicly thank them also. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Horace?
First of all, I'd like to offer my condolences to Mr. Mayo's family. I didn't know him as well as you folks knew him. I knew more from a political standpoint. And the one word I can use for him is a gentleman, a true gentleman. You knew where he stood. He would listen to you. May not agree with you, but he would at least listen and give you his opinion. I attended the State of the Military meeting, Legislative Update meeting, and also the economic update this week. I'd like to kind of disagree with my colleague here. I just hope this program runs better than Rebuild NC. You know, it's great the money is out there, it's made available, but you got to make it easy for the citizens to access the program. And that's been the problem with Rebuild NC. And if Rebuild NC wants to get in contact with me, I would definitely tell them how I think and what I feel. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Pate?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I was, Mr. Freeman said, nice little presentation just going, but maybe a little late. We spent going on five years for Matthew. And I just don't quite understand why we're doing this now. A little bit from the hospital, as you know, Janey's retiring in their future. And the Service Committee, which includes Mr. Freeman and myself, we are very close to identifying someone to take and fill that slot. And I feel very good about those we have interviewed. They've all been really good. I think you and C did a great job in their recommendations to us. Mr. Ray, Ray and I have been good friends years. We've had our differences like everybody else has. But he and I knew each other back when days I was at the Department Office. He claimed I sent him the worst candidate in the world. And I said, wait, that's us out there, Ray. But we had a lot of good laughs over that. Ray was a man of the great accomplishments. And if you'll look at his record, that's what he was about, getting things done. And
The former Louisiana Governor?
That's something to be proud of. I don't know why my computer just turned on by itself, but it did. Let me kill that thing. I'll tell you, technology has been bad. And I've had to back out of this conversation three times today, come back in. Going back to Ray, again, as already stated, he was a man of great faith. And if Ray was here to talk about himself, I'd say, don't worry about me. This is a celebration of my life. To come out and be able to celebrate. He was a man of family, church, and he loved Wayne County. Folks, I lost a good friend and so did Wayne County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thursday evening, I got the call and I could not have been more shocked to hear. Generally, talked to Ray every day or every other day over the last few months especially. And I noticed that trying to get ahold of him on Tuesday, actually, was difficult. But this was just totally unexpected. I think all of Wayne County has just took back the entire news of this. And I want everybody to recognize that this board has suffered three losses in a very, very short period of time. And as Commissioner Acock pointed out, he had spoken to several other counties. And they just have never heard of three commissioners passing in one year. And it's just been really unfortunate. But as Commissioner Pate pointed out, it really is a celebration of his life. Ray moved behind the scenes a great deal. He didn't take credit for a lot of things that he did. But when you look back over WCDAs and his tenure in working for Workforce Development, the DSS, he took great pride in that. And I certainly will miss his constant reminder that the key, the key to this, and I just think pleasant thoughts of it. Wish the best for his family and hope we all get over this very, very quickly. Okay, with that said, we do have an additional closed session.
Yes, sir, the same reasons that you went in before.
Great. Do I have a motion that we go back into closed session? Okay, we've got a motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand or aye. Okay, we're going back into closed session.